I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's February 16th Planning Board meeting. A couple of housekeeping items before we start. Just to let the board know, I received a nice thank you from John Sullivan for the pewter mug. And I'll give you the PS, it says, "P.S. I will be watching." So, John, thank you for the thank you and I hope you enjoy your seat in the show. Secondly, I'd like to make the board and the public aware that we'll be having another public hearing next Wednesday, February 22nd at 7:00. So just to let everybody know that as well. Getting into tonight's agenda, the first public hearing, the application of Cicero A. and Ruth Lewis owners in Changing Places LLC applicant for property located off of Falkland Way wherein site review approval is requested for the creation of 24 new townhome units on a proposed eight-lot subdivision with all of the proposed lots having an access of a proposed extension of Crescent Way extending through to Saratoga Way with related paving, utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said properties are shown on Assessors Plan 212 as Lot 123 and lies within a general residence B District. This application was tabled at the January 19th Planning Board meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, before we continue, I have to recuse myself as I live in the neighborhood and I'm active in the Neighborhood Association.
Thank you, Mr. Well. Having taken this application off the table, motion, David, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, John. Just to update the board and the members of the public that are here, at the last Planning Board meeting, this application was tabled, and it was tabled to allow for additional staff to be present for this meeting at the board's disposal. The department has requested that Peter Rice, a city engineer, to be present, also Deb Finnegan, the city's traffic engineer, and Dave Defosis, the engineering technician. These are resources that are available. Also, since this item has been tabled at a council meeting, the council was made aware of a communication in regards to larger planning issues. You have in front of you a memorandum that conveys those comments to you. The department has reviewed it and does concur that there could be some grounds for taking a look at a wider issue of traffic in particular out in the area as it affects Atlantic Heights due to the potential for additional development. In regards to this particular project, the staff has reviewed it, we do have the resources and the staff people here to consider that, but the department would support a motion to the effect to have this application looked at in terms of the larger picture. And the way that could be done would be to have it tabled to go back to TAC and perhaps even to request the TAC committee to be present at a future meeting, conceivably your next meeting. Because the TAC committee did not look at the larger picture in regards to this project, they were project-specific and they are available to answer any of your comments. I would also encourage you at this time to allow the applicant for the, the attorney's applicant, rather, to present the information that the board was looking for, and we do have the staff available to respond as well.
Okay, then what I'd like to do is have the applicant make his presentation. We can ask questions and I'd like city staff to comment on some of the issues that we had last week. Mr. Coker.
I don't know the sequence at which this question would be best put, but David, you say that you feel that you have the purview to look at the larger questions. Can you elaborate on that a little bit because my, everything that I was taught about planning says that you deal with the application in front of you. So please educate me a little bit.
Correct. And the application that's in front of you has been dealt with, there could be larger planning issues that need to be considered to see whether or not they have merit or if they lack merit. And part of that concern that is being expressed is that there is additional land out in the area that could be developed and how would that be handled? So to that extent, there may be some questions that the board feels should be addressed with information made available to you. So to that end, it would be appropriate if the board wishes to follow through on what the council itself is suggesting but not recommending.
Okay, if I may follow up, Mr. Chairman. Again, David, I guess I, can you quote where in our site review regulations or in our subdivision rules and regulations where you feel it is applicable that in fact we do, we have the purview to look at the broader picture?
I would turn you to page seven of your site review regulations and the evaluation criteria, and would suggest that you paralysis those. And for example, A, the application is incomplete as submitted, does not provide adequate information for the evaluation of proposed site development. In this instance, what you'd be looking at is the larger traffic impacts. I would submit on the narrow point of view of this particular project, it has been reviewed, but there might be downstream effects that need to be considered, effectively downstream.
Okay, Ms. Hayden.
And just to weigh in on that, Don, I think there were two reasons it was referred by the city council back to the TAC. One was looking at these larger issues which the Neighborhood Association raised in their letter, but a second issue is just the very specific traffic issues that come up relative to this particular development. So it's really two things, I think.
I actually agree with the, with the traffic on this particular application. I guess I'm just a little bit fuzzy as to the broadening of the scope of the review in excess of this application, i.e. the forthcoming, or what has been said as forthcoming, the low-income or the affordable housing, 40 units and what's referred to in the letters. I just am not really clear on that, that's all.
I'd again refer you also to additionally, criteria J, which addresses traffic. And it may very well be, Don, that following a review here, there may not be any impact. The issue is, is to what extent has the board, does the board have the information necessary to make its findings?
And I guess my only concern is staying within the boundaries of our charge, that's all.
I'm sure you will, we will manage that.
Thank you.
Who's here tonight to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bernie Peelich, I'm an attorney. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Changing Places LLC. We began this application in August of 2005, beginning with meetings with the city staff. It was acknowledged immediately that this project met all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And the initial plan that was presented met all of the requirements for site plan review and subdivision. We then proceeded to go to a pre-TAC back on August 30th where we met with city staff and all of the people, most of the people that you see here this evening from the city staff to discuss issues such as traffic, drainage, and all of the other things that TAC takes up. We then proceeded through the normal TAC procedure in October, November, December, and January. Through those meetings, we made whatever changes were requested by the technical advisory committee with regard to changing the roadway configuration from two cul-de-sacs to a through roadway. We changed considerably the drainage structure, all in accordance with recommendations of the technical advisory committee. We then appeared before the Traffic and Safety Committee at the recommendation of the technical advisory committee. We received a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Traffic and Safety Committee. We also provided a traffic study which was requested by the technical advisory committee, which was reviewed by the city's traffic engineer. I'm glad that at least one Planning Board member is a little bit fuzzy about this procedure because I'm a lot fuzzy. It appears to me that we are breaking new grounds this evening and we're changing the rules. And the rules are, we're not going to consider projects like we have for the past, how many years in the city of Portsmouth? We're now going to consider some future projects, although they have not been applied for, they are not in the pipeline. And contrary to what you hear, the Avanti project has never been approved, it has never been applied for. The Housing Authority project or the Affordable Housing project has never been applied for, it is not in the project. Yet for some reason, you're being asked to put the brakes on this proposal and do what? Wait for some unknown project to come forward in the future? Maybe? I submit to you that we have done everything that has been asked. We have followed every single procedure. We have done what has been the past practice of the technical advisory committee, the planning staff, and the planning board. We have done and attended all of the meetings. We have received from both the technical advisory committee and the Traffic and Safety Committee unanimous favorable recommendations. The last time that happened and the planning board voted against the project, I can tell you when. It went, because I was involved, it went to the Superior Court and the Supreme Court. And you're looking at Market Basket on Lafayette Road, and the issue there was traffic. The planning board denied the project after a favorable recommendation from the Traffic and Safety Committee and from the Technical Advisory Committee. There is no basis to delay this project any further unless we have a change in your rules and regulations that now says, in any, any application, we are going to consider potential future projects in the area. Subsection A and subsection J that Mr. Holden cited, I don't think are applicable here. If they were applicable, why didn't somebody tell us in August, September, October, November, December, or January? This is what we heard in January when we came before you. We heard that you needed more information regarding the drainage and how come the drainage was approved? And the drainage was designed in concert with David Defosis, the engineering technician who's there this evening, and he'll tell you that he approved it and worked long and hard with our site engineer, Dennis Moulton, to come up with a drainage situation that reduced the amount of stormwater runoff onto adjacent properties. This was suggested, we have a, an underground storage tank which is going to take care of any drainage and going to limit the amount of stormwater runoff onto adjacent properties and reduce it. The other issue was, you wanted more information on traffic, and I'm glad that Deb Finnegan is here, she has reviewed the traffic, she made suggested changes. And we, we went along with those, we're widening a part of a roadway, we're making the changes that were suggested by your traffic engineer. Questions were then raised about the water. And again, our engineer met with city staff and the city engineering staff and the water department and came up with something which the city water department felt was, not only mitigated the problem, but provided for future enhancement of the water service in the area. Our engineer Dennis Moulton will explain all of these things to you. Another issue that came up was you did not have elevations of the buildings, what they're going to look like. They're here this evening. It seems to me that we're entering into some very murky waters with regard to what is being asked of you this evening. The, I would also ask you to recall that the individuals who spoke to you last month from Atlantic Heights, each and every one of them said they are not opposed to this project, but they're concerned about future projects. Future projects which aren't even in the pipeline, projects which not, have not been applied for. I don't think there's any doubt that this project meets the zoning criteria, meets the subdivision criteria, and meets the site review criteria. Yet because of concerns from the Atlantic Heights residents that they have a problem primarily with Raleigh Way and the traffic that, and the problems that exist now, apparently they are asking this board to look at it in a larger scope. Well, let me just talk about the two projects which supposedly are forthcoming. I happen to represent one of the developers, and I'll tell you, it's not forthcoming, not in the immediate future. That's the Avanti project. The Avanti project is located on Falkland Way and Ranger Way and would have no impact whatsoever on this project or on Raleigh Way. In and out is from Ranger Way to Care Size Way and out to the bypass. The hotel project, I can't see how the hotel project is going to affect Atlantic Heights unless people from the hotel are going to take scenic tours through Atlantic Heights. It's down at the end of Care Size Way and it certainly is not going to affect traffic on Raleigh Way. The third project that you have heard about is the Affordable Housing project from the Housing Partnership, which we've all heard about for at least a year and a half, but which has not gotten off the starting line and has had no applications filed. We have no idea what the impact of that is going to be, however, we've been told by residents of Atlantic Heights that they're going to somehow create an access way to their project, which is not going to involve Atlantic Heights as we know it now. So what I am saying to you is, even if these three projects, which I don't believe should be considered because they are not approved and they are not so in the pipeline, they would not have any effect one way or another on this project. I think this project should be acted upon by this board this evening. We have provided and we will provide all of the information which you asked for at the last meeting, which was the purpose for tabling this application. There is nothing left for this board to do but to actually take action on the application. The basis for tabling, I don't know, but it certainly should not be because the city council voted to refer a letter sent to them by the Atlantic Heights residents to the Technical Advisory Committee. Unless the planning board changes their rules and regulations or changes the way in which they deal with all applications, this application should be dealt with like all other applications for the past 15 or 20 years have been dealt with. As Board Member Coker has indicated, he has always thought, as have I, who've been doing this for 28 years, that we deal with the application that's before us. We don't have a crystal ball, we don't know what's going to be applied for in the future. As such, I would suggest that the prudent action for the board this evening is to take an action upon this application. If you choose to deny it, so be it. If you choose to approve it, thank you. But let's not delay the project anymore. We started in August, we have followed the procedure, we've been to Technical Advisory Committee three or four times, we've been to pre-TAC twice, we've had numerous, numerous meetings with technical staff for the city of Portsmouth, we have been to the Traffic and Safety Committee. There are no other places we can go. We're here as our final step, we were here last week, uh, last month as our final step. I think that the applicants are entitled to a vote. I think that Mr. Lewis, who has lived in this neighborhood for many, many years and who chooses to use his property in a manner for which it is zoned, in a manner in which it complies with all of the requirements of the city of Portsmouth, should be afforded the opportunity to do with his property what he wishes. With that, I will conclude my marks, my remarks at this time. I will introduce Michael Brigham, John O'Neill, the principals of Changing Places LLC, and Dennis Moulton from Ames MSC, who is our site engineer and who will make the next presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Dennis Moulton with Ames MSC. I will just briefly go over the technical aspects of the request made by the board at the, the previous Planning Board meeting in January. The first issue had to do with the traffic study. We did provide a copy of the traffic study to the board in the packet that we sent, and hopefully you all have that for you. This traffic study was prepared by our traffic engineer out of the Bangor office, who, based on traffic counts done at the corner of Raleigh and Saratoga Way, developed this report for you. Basically, it shows that the traffic volumes at that intersection are very, very low. Intersection currently operates at what's called Level Service A, which is the highest possible level of service, and that's based on the delay time that you have moving through the intersection. When you add in the effects of our development, which, based on the peak hour of traffic, and that's the highest expected volume generated by these uses, which is 10 cars in the AM peak hour and 12 cars in the PM peak hour, which translates to one car every six minutes in the morning, one car every five minutes in the evening, which is a pretty good spacing of cars. You can see that when you add that in, Level Service remains at Level Service A. The delays are not significantly affected at the intersection. Which, when we talk about delays, what we're talking about is the time that is expected for a car, the extra time that a car takes to move through an intersection because of the controlled intersection, in this, in this case, a four-way stop. And as you can see by the table on the second page of the report, the average intersection delays are all around seven seconds. Level Service A is up to 10 seconds for a delay. So I feel that this adequately addresses that issue. As to the traffic itself on Raleigh Way, the traffic counts at the intersection indicated, I believe, in the neighborhood of 45 cars moving through the intersection at the peak hour, and an additional 10 would bump that up to, let's say, rounded off to about 55 to 60 cars. Still not a lot of cars moving through that intersection. You think about it, you know, one every minute on the average. Again, delays minimal, Level Service A. So we feel very confident that the effects of this development will be minimal and hardly felt at all, if you will, by the residents. The second issue, technical issue, that was brought up at the last meeting was the drainage concerns. At the last meeting, if you remember, I did present that we had, in consultation with Public Works, Dave Defosis, that we had redesigned the drainage to provide additional retention area on the site. We finalized those plans and provided new calculations for the retention area and for the overall drainage, and that should have been provided to you in your package. Again, that, what that shows, and if you have my letter here, it does show that there is a decrease in stormwater flow rates in each of the storm events that we modeled, which were the two-year, 10-year, 25, and 50-year storms. So again, we are very confident that the resulting effect of this development will be not to have a negative impact, in fact, to actually reduce the flow rates going onto abutting properties because of the system that we installed. And this has been reviewed by Mr. Defosis, I met with him personally. He did suggest one, a couple changes, or actually one change to the design, that was that we put a sump in the storage area, which will just, what we'll do is overblast the area or overexcavate the area and fill in below where the pipe actually leaves the retention area. And then he requested that surveyors actually locate the extents of the drainage area or the retention area so that it's accurately constructed, so that it will function exactly as we have designed it. What the, yeah. The other item that Bernie had asked me to comment on was the waterline extension. Again, when we met with city staff, we were made aware of the concerns of the Atlantic Heights, of course, through our meetings with them. We also, you know, when we met with city staff, they also expressed the same concerns about the, the present conditions of the water service to Atlantic Heights. And we said, "Well, you know what, we're willing to work with you. You know, we want to, you know, be a good neighbor, you know, and we'll do our part. We can't do everything, of course, but we'll do our part." So in comes consultation with them, you know, there was a number of things that we looked at in terms of improvements, and what we finally, finally settled on was an extension along this property line of a 10-inch water main for a future connection made by the city to the area over at Osprey Landing. Now, I don't know whether that will ever get built or not, but we have certainly, again, been working with the city, provided exactly what they've asked for and what they thought was a fair contribution in terms of alleviating the problems with the water out there at Atlantic Heights. I believe that covers the, the technical items. If there's any questions you'd like to ask at this time, I'd be happy to answer them. You know, while Bernie had mentioned, there's, we have the elevations of the buildings presented for you. These are houses that, or, or townhouses that the developer has previously built. They are typical of what they would put in at the, at the developed site, and we believe they're, they're attractive and would fit well within, on the site.
What I'd like to do is if we have any comments from the board members, I'd like to take them, then I'd like to have city staff address whatever concerns we have as well.
I believe we have, John, I believe one of the principals would like to address the board as well, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, city officials and the residents of Portsmouth. My name is John O'Neill, I represent Changing Places LLC. You've met all of my team tonight, my partner is Michael Brigham. Michael grew up in the Heights, and when this land became available, Michael was particularly excited about working in the neighborhood that he grew up in. For those of you that don't know us, we have been in the land development and home building business together for a long time. We take great pride in responsible development and quality construction, always looking at the big picture and the impact we have on surrounding residents and communities. You may know of some of our projects. We've done Harbor's Edge, Brigham Lane, which is off of Chase Drive, are the project that we would like to use as a model for this one, and that's called the Village of Bellamy Commons in Dover. It's located on Knox Marsh Road, Route 155. We're very proud of it. It was a very affordable project, and it's one that we would like to maintain in this neighborhood as a very affordable project. I just wanted to take a minute of your time to let you know that we are very sensitive to the concerns of our rebutters to this project. We have met twice with the Atlantic Heights Homeowners Association and listened carefully to all of their concerns. The major areas seem to be about traffic flow, current road conditions, water supply, drainage, and last but certainly not least, future potential developments. We want you to know that our team and many city officials have gone to great lengths to try and address each of these concerns. This should be made very clear when you look at what we first proposed as a fairly simple cul-de-sac that technically met all zoning requirements to what you have before, what is before you now. The changes that we made include, among others, thanks to the creation of a through road, we eliminated the two dead ends. We improved and widened Saratoga Way from Raleigh to Crescent Way. We're incorporating an extra water line that's being installed to the abutting property which if ever developed should dramatically help the neighborhood's water issues. We changed the drainage design so there is now zero drainage flowing towards the existing neighborhood. In summary, we feel that we have gone the extra mile to help this great neighborhood handle better what any future developments may bring. We look forward to a positive vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant or his team? Ms. Hayden.
I guess this is a question for the engineer relative to the traffic report. Are you the person to address those, Dennis? You know, one thing that I've heard from the neighborhood is concern about this particular development and the cars it would generate that would go on Raleigh Way, which is one of the more challenged streets out there. And I guess from a, just kind of, forget about being an engineer, if you're just a resident, just a common sense kind of interpretation, you know there's 23 units being added and you kind of picture two cars per unit, so you're thinking 46 cars. How do you get from the fact that, let's assume that most of the people that live there go to jobs in the morning? How do we get from, wouldn't there be 46 people jumping in their cars and leaving at peak hour in the morning versus the 10 or 12? And maybe you can, I think that's kind of a disconnect between the world of ITE and trip generation and the world where the rest of us live. If you can just kind of talk about that so that maybe the board and residents can understand as well.
Well, the traffic numbers that are generated by ITE are based on actual traffic counts of actual uses that are being used as, uses are typically used, you know, in various locations, you know, throughout the United States. If everyone in the townhouses worked at the same place and had the same jobs and each decided to take their own car and, yeah, I would agree, you'd probably generate 46 trips, but that's not the real world. The real world is these are, you know, two-bedroom townhouses- The real world is these are, you know, two-bedroom townhouses. You're going to have a mixture of different types of people in there. You're going to have some single residents. You're going to have some empty nesters. You're going to have people who have jobs that, you know, may start at eight, some people might start at seven, some people might start at, you know, 10, some people might work at night, who knows? So you're going to get a wide variety of times when people are actually leaving and coming back to the residences. And that's why, even though you've got 23 units, you're not necessarily generating all 23 trips at approximately the same time. There are very, you know, variances in how people live. That's just normal. I live on a street which has, I'm going to guess, around 30 houses on it, and when I leave in the morning, I hardly ever see a car going down the road besides myself. And that's just the nature of it. Everyone doesn't get in their car and leave at the same time, and everyone doesn't come back at the same time. So...
So the trip generation tables, do they look at the type of housing?
Yes.
Or, you know, what are the factors? What part of the table do you look at with a development like this?
In the trip generation, I don't know if you've ever seen the ITE books. There's, I think right now, there's, I think, three volumes of it. And they break this down into, you know, very specific categories. And the specific category that we looked at were townhouse-type units, in which they, you know, they've done the studies or they've done the counts. I mean, they have, you know, counts for single-family residences. They have counts for apartments. They have counts for condos, you know, condos. I mean, they differentiate in that way between apartments and condominiums. I mean, it's really a quite thorough reference, so, yeah, it pretty much matches reality.
And if I can keep going with some related questions. Have you got the traffic study right in front of you, Dennis? If you can just walk me through Figure One, which is the little intersection grid with the turning movements. What I'm trying to understand is wherever I might live in this 23-unit development, I might drive down towards Crescent Way to end up getting out of Atlantic Heights, or I might drive directly to Saratoga. Does this diagram show me that, or, I mean, or is it not at that level of detail?
It's really only showing you what's happening at that one intersection.
So the top diagram that shows the arrow with the 20...
Yep.
...paralleling Raleigh Way and going into Kearsarge, that one then assumes that those 20 cars are driving out via Crescent Way and coming into the far end of Raleigh and then going down to Kearsarge, right?
Right. Right. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, I'm trying to pick up on here...
Because I guess I would expect this diagram to look a little bit different. I would have thought that, you know, like, there'd be 10 cars coming in from Raleigh to get to Kearsarge, and there'd be, you know, the other 10 cars would be coming from the development into the end of Saratoga and then taking right onto Kearsarge. So I was just trying to, maybe I'm missing something.
Figure One is actually the existing condition.
Okay.
These are the actual counts right now.
Okay.
So in the peak hour in the morning, which is the top part of that diagram, you have the 20 cars coming down Raleigh Way through that intersection. You only have about three coming from the east on Saratoga and making that turn, and from the west on Saratoga, you have one.
Okay, so if you turn to Figure Two...
If you turn to Figure Two, and that's with the development built, and that's why you see...
And that assumes all eight of the peak hour AMs are coming into the new end of Saratoga and taking right onto Kearsarge.
Right.
But some of those, and so the model isn't complex enough to say that, well, four of those cars might actually drive down to the end of Crescent and come on that part of Raleigh.
I mean, you could make the argument that they might go in the other direction and turn down Raleigh and come down. I think the end result would be almost identical in terms of the anticipated delays. Figure Two just shows the counts, of course, that are generated by the site itself. That's why you see, you know, a whole bunch of zeros around the intersection, except for the ones that are coming out. So it does show, you know, all the traffic generation from our development coming out Saratoga and making that turn.
And that's, these figures are really geared towards the intersection and what's happening at the intersection more than, you know, if I lived on the piece of Raleigh Way between Crescent and Saratoga, for example, I would be more interested in looking at, "Oh, I wonder how many people are going to drive out this way." But this model doesn't really look at that.
It doesn't, but, I mean, at most, you'd probably, I mean, I'm just thinking of, you know, how the typical person would react to the situation they're in. If you look at the way our driveways are configured and, you know, where they're coming out, really, about the most likely person or set of people to be going in that direction would only be probably these four and maybe the resident of this house. I think the rest of them would, you know, just out of natural desire, the shortest distance between two points is, you know, to do that, they would go that direction. So I would think, you know, if, on a percentage basis, you might get a couple of those cars go that way, at the most.
And then just one final question on traffic. With the level of service, is that kind of an intersection geared thing too? It's about how long I have to wait at the stop sign for the other cars to go by before I can turn? Does that look at all at, is there any model in the world of traffic planning that looks at, do I have a free and clear, I can drive down this street because there's enough right-of-way with, there's not delivery trucks, or there's not cars parked on either side of the street? Does it look at that in terms of level of service? Because that's what I think the neighborhood responds to, is the challenges of Raleigh Way for traffic flow.
I don't know if such a model exists, or it would probably have to be generated by a combination of different techniques. I think maybe Deb Finnegan could probably better tell you on that. But I'm certainly not aware of a way to model such things as, you know, anticipating vehicles, you know, blocking certain sections or having to move around them, or, you know, that type of...
Did the traffic engineer, was it John Terrio?
Yes.
Yeah. Did he look at that at all in terms of, does Raleigh Way work as a street at any given time of day?
No, he did not.
Okay. Thanks, Dennis. Appreciate it. I'm done with my laundry.
It's okay. Thank you, Cindy. Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dennis, just so I can understand, on Page Two, there's a table that's titled "Unsignaled Intersection of Raleigh Way and Saratoga Way."
Yes.
And you have no build and build, and then for each of those intersections, Saratoga Way eastbound, there's A slash 6.5. I just want to make sure I understand what that means. That's level of service A, and 6.5 is the average delay. 6.5, I'm assuming, seconds?
That's correct.
Okay. Then, at the bottom, you have average intersection delay, A slash 7.1. Is that an average of the above four numbers? Because if it is, something's wrong with the math.
No. It's not an average of the above four numbers. When they plug it into their software for the, you know, for the intersection, when they put their numbers in, the software generates that number.
Okay, then...
And it's based on formulas that they use for this type of analysis.
Okay, so I guess I'm sort of confused as to how the average intersection delay...
It's weighted according to how many cars are coming from east direction.
Okay.
So, you know, if you have, for instance, you know, the Saratoga Way eastbound is a six-and-a-half-second delay, but if most of the cars are coming in that direction, then it kind of weights that average in that direction.
Okay. The only thing, it's sort of counterintuitive to me that your weekday AM peak number is actually lower after the build, and that's just counterintuitive. I mean, you add more cars in there, it seems that there will be more of a delay. Likewise, it's unchanged after the build. I think it would be reasonable to say, and you're absolutely right, your point's well taken, you know, this is not a, this isn't the corner of Lafayette Road and Middle Road. This is not all that much traffic.
Again, I mean, when you look at that average number, remember, in the no-build situation on Saratoga Way, you had one car coming eastbound. And now, in the proposed build scenario, you have nine cars. So that nine gets factored in against that 6.5, and that effectively lowers your average delay. So that's what's happening there. That's why, you know, it seems counterintuitive, but it's...
I'll take your word for it.
But, I mean, in reality, you're looking at seven seconds.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's almost, you know, ridiculous to put a point...
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Next to it.
Mr. Coverello.
You've been on through Raleigh Way, right?
Oh, yeah.
Would you consider it a good road?
I would say it's not in very good condition, no.
I was trying to summarize what all the findings have found, or where we're at. We've got Raleigh Way, it's a narrow road. It's difficult to pass, people are parked. It doesn't seem like the city can do much in improvements because they'd be going on private property to do the necessary improvements. Is that correct? Can we say that, or is it, or is there, the city just hasn't got there yet to improve that road? What was your, what's your opinion?
Boy.
Let's just, is there a more direct question that we can ask him? I don't want to have him give his opinion on. What's your question?
My question is, is the road improvable, or are we stuck with what we got there?
I, my gut feeling is it's improvable, but I guess I would have city officials...
I was going to ask the same question to Deb when she comes up later.
I guess I would defer to the city staff as to exactly what's planned. I know there's been discussions, when we were going through this whole process, that, you know, Raleigh Way was on the so-called list for improvements. And I would imagine those improvements are similar to what's been done in other places in Atlantic Heights, but I can't really comment on what exactly would need to be done there.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hayden.
Just one simple one. Do you have tip downs at each of the driveways for the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
If nobody, I've just got a couple of questions, Dennis, and then if nobody else says, I'd like to have the city staff come up. One of my concerns on the drawings is that, you know, there's no erosion control shown anywhere, and that kind of concerns me, that we've got all this underground drainage that goes into this underground storage, that there's no hay bale shown, there's no silt fence, there's not even an erosion control drawing. I've got a big concern with that, that it's not shown here. I think as much as you're using underground storage...
I was sure that we had silt fence shown on there, but if it's not on, then it was probably a layer that got turned off, which happens.
Looks like in the legend, there's nothing shown. The other thing is, you know, hay bales, I mean, my guess is when this site's developed, it's going to be pretty denuded and there's going to be a lot of exposed area, so that's one of my big concerns, that as much underground storage as you're using, that that's not And I guess in that same vein, there's a reference to clay shown on here for one of the detention areas, and it'd be nice if we had a specification for the clay as opposed to just, my definition of what I think clay is is probably different than most others. So I do have a big concern that there is no erosion control shown, and I guess if...
And that, again, I apologize for that because that's a layer that should have been on and should have been shown.
So...
I know it's on there. I know it's in the drawing.
Probably at the office, but regardless, so if nobody else is...
It's in the electronic world somewhere.
I can sympathize. If nobody else has any questions, I'd like to call city staff up, maybe if we can deal with water and drainage first, and then perhaps we'll go through traffic.
That would put Peter Rice on the, or at the podium first. Peter Rice.
Sorry to hear it.
Peter, I guess if you can just give the board a summary as to, you know, what got us here today, what concerns there were, how have they been addressed, your level of comfort, and if there's any questions that we have, we can ask them of you.
Well, first of all, I'm Peter Rice, city engineer for Water and Sewer Divisions. We've looked at the water issue out in this area as part of our master planning process, our Phase One master plan for the water system and our Phase Two master plan. And what we were looking at mainly was added access in there, redundancy of water service to the area was our concern mostly. We did do hydraulic modeling of the area and saw that there'd been improved pressure and flow to the area by adding another line, which is what the developer is showing through that extension to the railroad, which we'll be connecting in, up to Osprey Landing at some point in the future. The modeling did show that there was adequate flow and pressure to address or to serve these homes, proposed homes, and so we really don't have any concerns overall. But we did want to add, because it was part of our planning process, we saw an opportunity to benefit the area by getting an additional source of water out there.
The, I know some of the residents commented on the water pressure. What would happen if that tie-in, that the developer's going to extend down, if that goes into Osprey, what will that further do to help?
It'll give a more direct line to the, what we call the Seacrest Water Tank, and it'll improve. I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, but we looked at the modeling and we looked at a number of ways of addressing the pressure out there before this project even came into view, and the benefit was there, and it was something that we were looking at, pursuing at some point in the future. In addition, looping the system as is shown here, where it's a continuous loop, benefits the people at the ends of those streets, so that was a benefit to the system as well. Whenever possible, we like to create a loop so that you have the ability to shut one side off and still feed the system. So we saw it as a benefit to the neighborhood, and that's really why we were pushing for that additional line.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any? Ms. Hayden.
So in a nutshell, Peter, do you see any possible way that the addition of these units could make water pressure worse for existing residents, or is it a case of there can only be benefits?
I do not see a worsening condition. The benefits are going to be tangible. You're going to improve water flow at the ends of the streets by creating a loop, so what we call water age will be reduced, and you'll have improved pressure by getting another line into the area.
When you say at the ends of the street, at the end of Saratoga and at the ends of Raleigh and the ends of Crescent that are closest to this...
Yeah, that are currently dead, you know, it comes to the end of a pipe and that's where it stops.
Okay. Thanks, Peter.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Rice? Mr. Coker.
Just a curiosity question, Peter. In about 25 words or less, can you describe the modeling procedure that you referred to in about 10 different times?
I'll try. We have a computer model which takes all the water pipes, which are, I believe, six inches or larger, and creates a system which interconnects and shows flow and pressure. And there's Hazen-Williams formula and there's Bernoulli's equations, which models the hydraulics and how water flows. It creates a pressure model as well as a flow model, and you can do what-if scenarios. So you can say, "Well, what happens if there's a fire? This hydrant gets opened 100% and you're using 600 gallons a minute or 800 gallons a minute. What is the residual pressure in that area?" And that's really what's critical, is what, you know, if you have a fire and you're flowing it at that rate, what's the residual pressure? And as long as you're above the 20 PSI or in that range, you're doing fine. And that's the types of scenarios we look at, so...
Essentially, it's computer modeling.
It's a computer model. And we do, what we do afterwards is we go out and we actually test it. We open a hydrant, check the flow, check the pressure, and show if it's predicting what the model, or validating what the model is predicting.
Good. Thank you.
Peter, and one more question, I guess, is, does this water model almost do a traffic study wherein? Does it look at water pressures at peak times, that, you know, the residents out here may be showering in the morning, et cetera?
You can do a diurnal, you can make it a very dynamic situation, but that level of complexity is something that we haven't gotten to at this point. We are recently transitioning the model into a new computer model, which we've validated it. But to get it to that level, you have to add what we call diurnal curves, and it's a more dynamic situation where you continually modeling with the... a more dynamic situation, where you continually modeling what the pumping systems are running at, what the tank elevations are running at, and you do, you have to have points where you monitor pressure, and you can actually take the pressure changes over time and input it into the computer to get a more dynamic model. In this case, it's more of a static condition, where you say, okay, here's the pressure at this time, you open the hydrant, what is the condition, assuming the pressure's remaining consistent out around the area, and what's the resulting pressure as a result of that? But we do, we do do worst-case scenario when we're doing this, you know, during, you know, the tanks are low, the pumps are off, and we can look at those types of scenarios as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Rice? Thank you, Peter. David, do you want to just come up and give us... I know you spent a lot of time on the drainage, if you can just give us a quick synopsis of where we started, where we're at?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Dave Defosis from Public Works Department. I did work with the applicant quite a bit on this. Essentially, the overall riding problem with the site was there's a large bowl in the site now that accesses detention basin. It absorbs a lot of water from the backyards of Raleigh Way, as well as Mr. Cicero's land. As it currently sits, all the water goes into that basin, and it slowly dissipates. In fact, we think the basin might have been the original excavation pit for building the original roadway for the heights. The plan for this development goes right through that basin, requires filling it, therefore taking that void out and causing volumetric problems that are largely not directly associated with the development, other than the fact that they're filling where the detention, where the natural detention basin is now. It went through a lot of things. We actually walked the entire drainage basin, I think it was back in, back in early December. It goes into a very large wetland complex that could easily handle large amounts of volume, but it is not on the applicant's property. The way the law is written, that you're not allowed to increase flow rate off of your own property. So I asked the developer to either come up with drainage easements, or to find some way of dealing with the increase in flow rate, and potentially, hopefully, volume, although volume's not really a consideration in this because of the size of the, size of the wetland complex it's going into. They came back with many questions, and I guess, really, it was kind of a, you know, a whole dynamic thought process to, well, underground, in a conventional sense, won't work on this site because of the ledge. Really, the development uses largely most of the property for houses and driveways and such, so there wasn't really room for a detention pond. So it came down to a question of creating a detention basin underground. So the thought was, because there's gonna be so much blasting on the site, that they're, you know, they're gonna have to bring in a blaster anyway, why not overblast an area, create essentially a giant holding pit underground, made out of crushed stone, let the water hold in there, and let it seep out naturally. So I think Dennis's design has an eight-inch pipe orifice draining out of that basin. I also asked him to make sure that he packed the aforementioned clay on the bottom to make sure that it wouldn't just run out of the ground and essentially do nothing. So that would help to provide that containment and underground storage of stormwater. From there, it goes into a treatment swell, and then is outlittered into the wetland complex that it goes into now.
Ms. Hayden.
Dave, that was a great explanation, thanks. Am I correct in thinking, then, public service had raised issues with water going into their land, that's all been addressed at this time, right?
Yeah, this design really, really does address that. Because of the wetland complex, it was almost a non-issue, but this design does meet the letter of the law, which is what we were looking for, so I think it's, I think it's a good plan, other than the erosion control being missing.
Thanks, Dave.
Mr. Coker.
Dave, in your professional opinion, is this an improvement over existing conditions?
I don't think it's an improvement, Mr. Coker. I don't think, it's definitely a change. I don't think it's a bad thing, so it's none of the above. I think it's just different. Right now, all that water goes into the ground, it'll go through the ground, and it gets into that wetland complex, or it runs off directly into the wetland complex. They're simply moving that water around differently, and it's going in the same place.
Is there any maintenance involved in this drainage system?
Well, there should be literal or no maintenance. All the catch basins are designed with our standard oil-water separator things. All the catch basins have sumps, so hopefully, if the sediment is caught, really, that's the only thing that we should be wary of, is making sure that the sediment doesn't get into that crushed stone, because after time, it would fill up the crushed stone. And if that happened, it would become evidence, because the water would start backing up. It's not like something that would go unnoticed. So I think it's, it's a low maintenance thing.
Who owns this?
It'll be a city-owned system. The developer is proposing a city street. He's giving the city a drainage easement, and so even though these drainage improvements are on private land, we have a drainage easement, and the city will take charge in overseeing them, just like we do on every other city street.
So would it be fair to summarize your statement by saying there's no net change?
There will be more volume, as there always is with the development. The wetland complex can easily handle it, and I think the change is easily absorbable in this particular case. There is nothing downstream, other than one culvert, which is the back road to PSNH that leaves, I think it starts at the end of Porfus Way and goes to the backside of Shilla Station. I personally looked at that culvert, I believe it can handle any kind of increase fine, and from there, it goes right into the ocean, into the river. So I don't think it's going to, any kind of volume increase is gonna hurt anybody at all. In fact, you know, the extra water, minimal as it is, might actually help the wetland complex.
Was that a yes or a no?
That's a complicated yes, I think.
Well-trained, David. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Defosis? Thank you, David.
Okay, thank you.
Deb, if you'd like to come up on the traffic, please? And if you can just give your quick summary of where we've been, where we're at, and then I'm sure there'll be some questions.
Good evening, I'm Debbie Fittington, if you have not met me yet, I'm the city's traffic engineer, it's nice to be here. My summary is as follows, they went through and did a standard, what I would consider standard practice, standard engineering practice to do their study. There's minimal traffic through the intersection now. I don't believe that traffic added is going to impact that intersection to such a detriment that we need to change it. However, with that being said, we did not ask them to look at the impact to Raleigh In my opinion, there probably won't be an impact, but I didn't ask them to do that. As for the question about the traffic model that we use, there's something called synchro, and you can put all kinds of different elements into it, street width, buses stopping and, you know, starting and stopping near intersections, you can put it in as a signal, you can change the roadway width, you can change actually how people drive. Like, when I worked in Boston, we made the drivers very aggressive, so they don't stop at, slow down for the yellow, they kind of shoot through the yellow and keep going in an intersection. So there's a multitude of ways to change that particular model, and you can also include more than one intersection, you can include 10 intersections if you so desire to do that. So in my opinion, that there are things I probably should've asked them to look at, but I think that they did their due diligence with what I asked them to do.
So are you satisfied with the traffic report that they've provided?
For the most part, yes. There were some things I would've had them do differently, but it was just a matter of counting on different days. Standard engineering practices, you don't count on a Monday or a Friday, usually do Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and the reason that being is, many people take a Monday or Friday off to do a three-day weekend, but in this particular case, it's a neighborhood, it probably, it's not as big as an impact as, say, is Route 1, somewhere on Route 1, so...
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Coviallo.
The roadway, is it improvable?
Yes.
Within the limits of city-owned land?
That is my understanding.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Deb. Before I open it up to the public hearing, are there any other questions for the applicant? No? Hearing none, I'll open it up to the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak to, for, or against this application?
I'd just like to speak to it for now. Basically, I am in favor of it.
You name an address for the record, please.
Oh, heavens, forgive me. Raymond Will, 125 Preble Way. For the record, I'm also a member of the Portsmouth Planning Board, but I've recused myself for this particular application. First, I'd like to thank the city staff and city officials for their vision of looking at this section of town as a whole. While I certainly agree with Mr. Pielich on some points, and disagree with him on other points in regards to the other three developments in the area, while none of the other applications, none of the other proposed projects in the area actually have a site plan in front of you, Avanti does have an agreement with the city to purchase city-owned land. The hotel has been in and out of court, and they have had site plans in front of the city, and they're also at the only entrance to this neighborhood. The Portsmouth, the Housing Partnership has met with the Neighborhood Association on a couple of occasions to discuss the workforce housing, and they've provided a very clear vision as to what they want and where they want it in the neighborhood. And of course, LLC is before you with a full site plan. The problem I have here is that none of these developers are conferring with one another. And while I am certainly concerned about my neighborhood, as a city planning board member, what I'm most concerned about is an attitude of every developer for themselves, a future that, where the last developer of these four to present a site plan that's approved is left holding a grab bag of potential concerns related to traffic and drainage, all of these projects abutting the heights. If I remember correctly, sometime in the past, when Pick 'n Pay was developed, it was developed around the same time that other properties surrounding it were developed, and there were other traffic concerns, and certain property owners were put on the same page as to what was going on. I think that was a really good way to develop that particular area, instead of a piecemeal fashion. I really think this is a doable project. I think Raleigh Way is improvable. But I think in fairness to all four developers, in fairness to the Neighborhood Association and neighbors there, and not only that, but the hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars the city has invested in improvements to that neighborhood, I think a big-picture approach is best for all. Finally, there is one thing I was thinking about as we were looking at the traffic study. I noticed that the traffic study seemed to concentrate solely on the corner of Saratoga and Raleigh, but looking at the proposed travel route, you see a red loop. And it's good of the developer to write that, it also shows that they're very familiar with the neighborhood. Most people, when they come in, if they're in this side of the neighborhood, on the Concord, Porfus, Raleigh side, may come down and point their cars north and park them that way. And then, when they go and leave the neighborhood, continue on the same road north, and loop around back toward Kiasaj Way. So someone, say, parking, who's got a house on, say, the right-hand side of Raleigh Way as you go up the street, might leave it there, and then drive this way north, and loop around to the proposed way and out. Or someone at the proposed development may come in this way, and then access a loop out toward the north corner of Crescent and Raleigh Way. I have concerns that that corner may also have increased traffic, and there's no traffic study on that. I'm not sure if that's within the purview of the board, but it certainly is a concern as potential development is also around there for the proposed workforce housing, and some coordination, I think, is needed for all four of these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody in the public wish to speak to, for, or against this application? Hi, you name an address for the record, please?
My name is Andre Cardoso, 199 Concord Way. There's been sort of a lot of beating around the bush about Raleigh Way and the issues and so forth. What the traffic study misses entirely is the fact that there isn't enough room for two-way traffic. That's pretty much what this boils down to. There's certain roads that have been improving in the neighborhood, other roads that have been slated for improvement, there's no overall design for the neighborhood. I think that the concern is that if it has to go one way, or it's gonna stay two-way, or whatever, that isn't being taken into consideration on the present plan. So as far as future, future development is not as much of a concern right now, because as it is, it isn't working now. So I guess the concern is that the traffic study's moot, because it isn't a volume issue, it's a size issue, and that, you know, two cars can't go down at the same time, you can't take a left, someone's coming out, and so forth. So that's, that's sort of what the issue is. And I think it's kind of amazing that the Traffic Department of Portsmouth hasn't said of the fact that the road's abysmal, and isn't wide enough for two cars, so that's it.
Thank you.
I have a question, when they said on Raleigh Way and Kiasaj, so many seconds or whatever it was, the traffic would move through. But in my opinion, when they come out of the new development, and they go down Saratoga, if that's gonna be tied up, they're gonna shoot right down to Crescent, swing around, come right out Kiasaj, and the poor people on Raleigh, they're not gonna get out, because of the traffic trying to get out from Crescent going up Kiasaj. And if people get smart, huh, I'll go all the way down to Crescent, onto Preble, up Ranger, and bang, out I go. But there is a problem on parking, excuse me, time getting in and out. And something nobody's mentioned, if the cars are packed there, look at all the pollution. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wish to speak to, for, or against this application? Anybody? To, for, against, third time? Seeing no one rise? I'll close the public hearing. Before we talk about a motion, I'd like to see if anybody else has any other questions I made for the applicant?
Want me to ask him, or are you...
No. Does anybody on the board have any questions? I have a couple of questions, if I could ask Dennis. In this traffic study, is it, was Raleigh Way modeled as clearly a two-way street? And was the parking of the on-street vehicles considered in that analysis?
Again, Raleigh Way itself was not modeled in the analysis. The analysis solely concentrates on the movements at the intersection, and the traffic volumes and the delays at the intersection. Raleigh Way was not looked at.
Okay.
At all. But again, I remind the board that what we're talking about, in terms of traffic, one car every five minutes at the most, on average.
What improvements, though, are being done at the intersection?
The improvements...
Or where the pavement is joining into the existing?
The improvements that are being made on Saratoga is the widening of Saratoga. Currently, at the intersection, Saratoga and Raleigh Way, from the eastbound direction, the street is 20 feet wide. We are widening it to 24 feet to provide two 12-foot travel lanes. This is at the request of city staff. We are also providing stop signs and stop line, to make that a true four-way intersection. Currently, it has, it's a three-way intersection, which is configured very oddly, but that's the way it exists now. A three-way stop, I should say, it's gonna be configured as a four-way stop. So the, those are the improvements they're proposing, which will, again, hopefully, you know, mitigate the very small impact that I feel we're gonna have on the intersection to the volume of cars that we're gonna generate.
And I've just got one other question. The elevations, this is the first I've seen of them. Has any thought gone...
Has any thought gone into colors or textures for the fronts of these buildings to try to integrate them into the existing neighborhood?
I think the developer would have to address that.
I'm just curious. It's the first I've seen of the elevations, and I'd be curious to know.
We haven't taken into account colors. We thought that we're pretty happy with the way they look right now, and if anything, we try to use earth tones. We think that we're fairly separate, excuse me, fairly separated from the neighborhood so that even though it is going through the neighborhood, it doesn't necessarily have to tie into what the neighborhood shows. And quite honestly, there are quite a few homes in the neighborhood that do not have brick, or any brick involved in them. So, you know, we're going to do a nice job. We do a very nice job. We'll look at it again, and we will do a good job, that's all I can really tell you. But we haven't given any thought into colors at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just follow up on that? One of the concerns in the master plan is that the board should be looking at design review. And obviously, this area of the heights does have its historical components and correctness to it. Could you elaborate further on the effort that went into picking this particular elevations over others?
One of the main reasons we went with this elevation is because of the topography that existed on the site, and knowing that most developers have models that they use, David, that they're very familiar with, that know it work well with certain terrains. This terrain was such that we felt as though the first floor of the units would align properly with the road and look like a streetscape, and that the lower level, so they would look typically like a two-story building. The lower level is hidden behind the building, giving it the perception that from the front is a two-story building, from the back where the garages come in, you have a three-story that's not really exposed to the scene. So really, what you're looking at is the front elevation, not the garage elevation, that we're looking at the front, which is a very modest two-story building.
So no thought was given to providing, Rick?
We're trying to keep these affordable. We're really trying to keep them affordable. We're giving to the city. We've given some, made some effort. We feel affordability is the main component, and anytime you add something more to it, it makes it less affordable. And I believe that was the emphasis in the beginning, is that we were trying to create affordable housing. These are very, very quality-built homes.
Any other questions? Thank you. It's a pleasure, board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to echo, to some degree, what Attorney Pilich was indicating. The applicant is entitled to an answer, yes or no, ultimately on an application. However, there is no rush to judgment either if this board feels that it needs additional information. I would suggest that the board publicly discuss whether you are now satisfied on those issues that were the basis of the tabling at your last meeting, specifically the drainage, the water, and the traffic. I think as the city's traffic engineer has indicated, there was a narrow, a more narrow review of the traffic issue when this project came through. If the board feels, after reading J, that you feel that more information is needed, you are entitled to table it, and you are entitled to have a report back from the Tac Committee. If however you feel you have enough information available to you at this time so you can make an informed decision and take an action, then by all means do that. But you do not have to be rushed to judgment on this matter either.
Ms. Hayden?
I am satisfied. I think the applicant has done great work in working with the city. I'm satisfied on drainage and everything except the traffic conditions on Raleigh Way, and I don't think that that was looked at, and perhaps the applicant was not asked to look at it. But I really would like it go back to Tac to look at basically the functionality of Raleigh Way. And how that functions or doesn't function, does the city need to consider making that one-way now? Is this going to be the breaking point to add X number of more trips per day to it? So I feel like it needs to go back to Tac specifically for that issue of how Raleigh Way will function with these additional cars. So I would be suggesting that we table it pending that.
Is that a motion?
I will make that motion to table until we get feedback from Tac on the traffic conditions on Raleigh Way specifically.
Mr. Chairman, before we take a second on the tabling motion, which therefore renders it undebatable, I would like to...
Not necessarily. The motion to table is denied. It's not rendered useless, so...
Well, before we have a second on that, I find myself in the very unique and uncomfortable position of actually agreeing with Bernie. Probably it's about the second or third time. Probably only about the second or third time since I've been sitting on this board that I agree with him. I think if we step back for just a moment and we look at our own big picture, is why are we here? It says, "No site plan will be approved unless it complies in every respect with all pertinent ordinances and regulations." I believe for the following reasons that it does. Peter Rice agreed that the water flow will be improved. There will be no net degradation from Dave Defosis. Debbie, and I apologize, I don't recall your last name. Sendigan, thank you. Minimal traffic, no degradation at Raleigh Way. They did their due diligence. She is satisfied for the most part. Raleigh Way is improvable. And as a statement of fact, Raleigh Way is what it is now, not as a result of this development. The impact, the number of trips, is minimal. The evaluation criteria came up with, "If the planning board disapproves a site plan, it shall make one or more of the following written findings with respect to the proposal." And we referred to A and J, which is the application is incomplete, and J is the traffic issue. I think for all of those reasons, and I do not believe that this board has the jurisdiction to consider applications that don't even exist. That's beyond our purview.
Okay, then I'll...
And it may be a flaw in the process, and I agree wholeheartedly. The neighbors have concerns and everything else. But it is, if anything, a flaw in our process, and it's not our purview to cure that now. So therefore...
Okay, there's a motion on the table. It's a table.
Well, you need a second.
Right.
You need a second.
Right. Now, I'm getting there. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Motion to table, and it's been seconded now. Discussion? You said you're... Mr. Covell, do you have any discussion?
I'm going to vote against the tabling. I think the applicant has, I mean, he's jumped through enough hoops. I mean, I really think that the, I can understand the residents' concerns. I've been to Raleigh Way, I've looked at it, and it's a difficult street, but I think it's a problem created by the city. The city is limiting this applicant's ability to develop his land, and I don't think it's fair to deny the applicant that right. So I'm going to vote against the tabling.
Okay, hearing that. Rick, do you have any comments? All those in favor of the tabling motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Two opposed. The tabling motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, am I correct in assuming that tabling is to a time certain for the next meeting of the board, which would be on the 16th?
That's correct.
Of March. Mr. Chairman, we have a point of clarification. It is my understanding that once a tabling motion is made and seconded, all debate ceases and take an immediate vote, according to Robert's Rules of Order. Am I correct, or am I wrong?
The motion is actually, can be explained and discussed. It is not an absolute, non-debatable point.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
For the record, could the applicant please have clarification as to the purpose of the tabling and what is expected of the applicant, or is the applicant simply to sit by while we wait?
Am I correct?
We have conducted whatever traffic studies have been requested of us, we have been to traffic and safety and technical advisory, both of which unanimously recommended. It is my understanding this board has just voted to table, but I don't know for what reason.
And I will try to clarify that by asking the chair if I'm correct in assuming that this motion to table is with the intent to have the letter that has been provided to you and this application provided to your technical advisory committee for a report back with recommendation at your next meeting? And I guess if you wish to have that, the full...
That was not part of the motion at any time. With all due respect, that has never been mentioned this evening.
But I heard it was traffic.
I heard traffic. I didn't hear anything about any letter. If it's traffic, that's one thing. We can respond to traffic.
The letter will be provided by the department to the technical advisory committee, yes.
Which letter?
The letter that has been provided to this board. This board has been provided communications that you're aware of from the neighborhood.
Okay, the letter that was referred to Tac by the city council. But that was, as I understood, that was not the reason for the tabling this evening.
No. Tabling here is to send this application back for traffic. And the technical advisory committee has had a referral on the neighborhood, by the neighborhood letter. Those two will be taken up together.
My question is, in the interim, is the applicant expected to do anything?
I'm sure that you'll be contacting me to see if there is anything that we'll be expecting of you.
And when are we tabled, until?
March 16th.
Thank you.
Moving on to item two, city council referrals and requests. The request to purchase unnamed lane abutting Pleasant Street. David?
Mr. Chairman, this site, no, actually, you may want to take this off the table. It's been tabled, so it'd be properly off the table.
This was tabled, Ford. Moved, take off the table?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, this has been on the board's agenda for some time now. We've been told that the applicant, or the person that has made application to the council will be providing us with additional information. That information is not forthcoming to date. What the department would propose to do is to recommend that you table us to the next meeting, but also direct staff to write a letter to the parties involved and see if there is in fact going to be any more information, so that we can report back to you at your next meeting to refine this or dispose of it one way or the other, so we do not have to keep it on the agenda. So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Moving on to item three, old business. Report back from DPW on current standard for monuments.
It is not true that we're bringing this up because John Sullivan is now watching us on TV and not in person. Our report is essentially the same as the last one, which is the Public Works Department has their standards, which are contained in the city subdivision rules and regulation, which basically says that you will put monuments at arcs, property lines, set number of distances back from the right-of-way, and as DPW would require. In talking with other surveyors who have oftentimes appeared before the city, the system, though dated, does work. The primary interest would be to update it to our GIS system and to also our mapping system, and since we do have an RFP out looking for a consultant to assist us in our subdivision rules and regulations, along with the zoning and your site review, that that would be a good topic to be updated at that point. So right now, we have a system that works. It needs to be updated, and you'll have a schedule for that update coming in. So effectively, this is just our report on the matter.
Thank you. There's no action needed on that, correct?
I don't believe so, unless great proposal...
I do have a question.
Oh, Mr. Ward.
Not to so much speak for John Sullivan, though he's not here, and I certainly agree with the department's assessment, and I believe basically we have a system that works. But I think John had a pretty narrow concern, that if I remember correctly, and don't quote me on this, some of the ways that we mark monuments and benchmarks are through iron rods and such, and he was concerned that some of those may rust or deteriorate or sink. And I think there's no reference to John's concerns in this, though I believe you don't need to throw out the baby with the bathwater or tear down the whole system. I think addressing some of those concerns, deteriorating markers, and I think upgrading it to the GPS system is certainly an improvement in addressing of his concern indirectly, but I still think there's a lot of benchmarks out there that I think John makes a legitimate point on. Ironically enough, he's not here and we're still talking about it. Is there some way we can find some way of getting some sort of policy for those markers that could potentially deteriorate, and just some update to the board as to what's going on with those particular markers, without tearing down the whole system?
Well, frankly, once the board's approved a property, and you have the owner that owns it, hypothetically, the house you own, you're responsible for your markers, not the city. The idea of getting a plan filed, a deed filed, and also a GPS is so that if you need to, you don't have to go out and reinvent the wheel, but you could actually replace the pins or put new ones. So so long as you've done the other, it really doesn't matter what the existing condition is, or the older condition, so long as you can replicate it. And in fact, an iron pin will likely outlast most of us. But with our rich history, what they're looking for is the ancient oak on the side of the fence by Farmer Jones.
Most houses are three times older than anybody here at this table, so...
We missed John on that point, don't we?
Except for John Sullivan, because it may be a little younger than him.
So, okay. Item three, old business. B, project of potential regional interest. David, can you just give a heads up on that?
Yeah, the city was made aware largely through the newspapers of a large proposed residential development roughly at Breakfast Hill Road on the boundaries of Rye and the town of Greenland, and it would have a potential impact on the delivery of such services as water and sewer, potentially, I guess, also traffic. The department, in anticipation of a public hearing on it, raised the issue of regional impact with both the town of Rye and Greenland. In subsequent communication with the town administrator, I believe the project is going on a slightly slower track, where they're doing perhaps a little more of an internal review of what the parameters of the project. But we feel it's still important enough that we'd like this board to be aware and perhaps to direct staff to maintain a survey or awareness of the project, particularly in terms of sewer, water, and traffic, and that your concurrence in that gives us a little bit more guidance in our ability to keep a positive presence in that, because ultimately, if there is a regional impact, the city would be afforded the status of an abutter. Since these are municipal services that we may or may not be providing, it would be significant. So what we'd like from you is a sense that indeed you would request the department to keep an eye on this project and make periodic reports back.
Does that seem fair?
That seems like a reasonable assumption.
Mr. Coker.
What about David's school impact also? Because there's no high school in Greenland, there's no...
That's a good point.
There's no high school in Rye.
No, pardon? It's actually in both. It's in the town of Rye and a small portion of it is in Greenland. At this, the project might be over 55, but it doesn't hurt to keep track of those kids that come home. And also, as we all know, we have not had much luck in restricting developments to over 55.
Hey, I could live there.
So...
Just a couple more things. As just a reminder, that next Wednesday, the 22nd of February, we'll have another public hearing. That'll be at 7:00. You have one other item?
Yes. Presuma 2, Article 3 of the zoning ordinance, we're making you aware that we do have, ironically, in Atlantic Heights, a subdivision request. And what it is, is it's based on the old plan from 1919, and they're basically re-establishing that lot line, and under our rules and regulations, we need to make you aware of that, essentially so the public is aware and no other action is required. The property is at 131, 133 Porfus Way and is identified on Tac map, 212 as Lot 69. Soon to have another lot. And we fulfilled our purpose. The only other point I'd like to make is we are doing this next meeting on Wednesday. We'll send emails out to you, but there are a number of public hearings that we won't be doing, obviously, tonight, but we do need a full board or as close as we can get next Wednesday. It can't be on Thursday because of scheduling conflicts. And I'd also just add that the reason for holding this meeting is not due to anything on the part of the board or the department.
With that, motion for adjournment?
So moved. Actually, motion to recess to next Wednesday on the 22nd.
Excuse me.
Motion to recess.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Great.
This meeting is recessed.